Take their seats where about this morning, please. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on April 18th, 2019, and it's been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of April 22nd, 2019. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and requirements of posting of notices have been met on April 18th, 2019. Can we stand for your pleasure, will you?
My pledge is that I am United States' brother and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark DeScatola, now of the council, are there any changes to the executive agenda for which to note?
Yes, Mr. Asitola, there were a couple other items in addition to what was listed on the agenda that was printed up beforehand. With respect to Box Number Six, Board also discussed it, discuss four testing results. With respect to Box Seven, the board discussed a student residency litigation and a possible class action matter. The board also discussed in Box Seven, referendum and facility issues as well.
Thank you, Mr. DeScatola. Meeting minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 14th, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Sean.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Caffiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Bankhauser.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera.
Abstain.
Mr. Asitola.
Yes. Communications are on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Reports, I'd like to turn the floor to Mr. Sampson for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Asitola, and welcome, and thank you everyone for coming out tonight. So, we're gonna open the meeting to recognize our spectacular winners, but I first want to publicly acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Kane, Mrs. Federici who's here. Federici's donate to all the pizzas every year for this event, and go way above and beyond. Judy Guy, who is a longtime committee member, and Tracy Moriarty, who also spearhead this work. And so, for anybody who doesn't know what Spooktacular is, it's the ultimate community event. It is absolutely one of the best events that this district is associated with. It's everything about school and community partnerships. Students see an art project from fruition all the way through to the windows and downtown Freehold. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students to interact with the community. It's supported by community members who are deeply invested in our schools and our students. And I think that anyone who walks around on that day, and I was in Washington DC this year presenting, so I missed it, but the whole vibe of that day is everything that's special about the communities that we live in, everything that's special about the kids that are part of this district, and everything that's special about the community members who are so vested to keep that event going year and year. And it's a ton of work. Annette Piazza's also from our offices incredibly important in all that work, and Mr. Dillon this year, and Jay Robinson, who I think was still delivering pizzas, I understand, this year. He took my, oh, he took my photo off, Mr. Kane. And so, I want to call Roger Moore McCain to the podium, and we're gonna recognize some of our winners. Thank you, Mr. Samson.
Before we start, board members, you can have a seat in the audience.
Okay, as Dr., as Dr. Sampson said, we want to thank you and the board, and the faculty at the different schools for all the help they give us. This is a longstanding tradition in Freehold Borough. We had this year over 150 art students that participated. They painted over 85 windows, so it was one of the more successful ones. And we had, each year, the talent varies, and this year was an over-the-top talent, I guess. So, I'd like to call up my wife Barbara, and I think Tracy Moriarty. But I also would like, we have a distinct honor this year, and every year, one of the things that the students look forward to is they're fed. Not only do they have fun painting windows, but they have a chance to have delicious condensed pizza. And this year, I have the honor of introducing the matriarch of the Federici family, Mrs. Pat Federici. Federici's been generous enough to be doing this for the last 15, 16 years, given they donate all the pizzas to the students. So, we have an honor this year of having the boss come out. Alright, so Barbara, you have your thing.
I'll take it over.
Thank you.
I don't have Roger's booming voice, so I will use this, I think that will help. I'd like to start with honorable mention awards. And first honorable mention goes to Coltsneck High School, Principal Dr. Brian Dunlegh. The student artists are Ciara Magnir and Olivia Mundy for their painting of Skull with Hat, which was painted on Kinsey's Detailing Auto Center. Their teacher is Lauren Hademan, and their supervisor is Deirdre Boba. If they would please come forward, hopefully we are here. Congratulations to them. Second honorable mention is for Freehold Tancher High School, Principal Alicia Skelso. The student artists are Kylie Prue and Sarah Trillo for their painting of Deadly Advertisement, painted on the window of E&amp;E Locksmith. Their teacher is Melissa Alvarado, and their supervisor, Michael Mendez.
Wait, just do the turns. Turn them on, there you go.
Congratulations. And the third honorable mention goes to Marlborough High School. The student artists are Caroline Lyons and Alexis Bonilla for their painting, A Good Wife Always Makes Her Husband Dinner, which had a lot of people laughing and taking a lot of care of this picture. Their teacher, Lauren Fraser, and their supervisor, Jane Goldstein. So, if they would come forward, that would be wonderful. I will hear, hopefully. Thank you very much. Now, Tracy Moriarty will proceed with the awards for first, second, and third place.
Good evening. For third place, we had Freehold High School. The principal is Linda Jewell. She was not able to be here tonight, so we have Assistant Principal Jerry Acevedo. The students are Carla Ramirez, Felicia, and Inellas Fuentes. Their painting is El Diablo de los Muertos, on the Freehold Municipal Building, and their teacher is Dan Finaldi, their supervisor is Judy Lugana. You can see their beautiful pictures there. Thank you, ladies. For second place, we had Marlborough High School. Their principal is David Legley, the student is Caroline Henek. Her painting is You'll Float Too, the window was on the Habitat for Humanity in Monmouth County. The teacher was Lauren Fraser, and her supervisor is Jane Goldstein. Miss Caroline Henek. And finally, our amazing first-place prize goes to Manalapan High School. The principal is Dr. Adam Anglosi. The student is Josephine Cronin and Lily Cronin. The painting is Everybody Scream, the window was on the Freehold Liquors. Their teacher is Robert Andriesi and Richard Berger, and the Assistant Principal is Levetta Ross. Can we please ask Josephine and Cronin? You can go work for your school for the year as well.
So, that's a, no, this is a, what we call a traveling trophy. It's got little plaques every year of which school won. And it stays with that school for the entire year, so they have bragging rights.
At this time, on behalf of this Spooktacular Committee, we wish to acknowledge and thank the following people for their very important roles in Spooktacular Window Painting. Rebecca Polo Castro, Communications and District Projects Coordinator. Mr. Michael Dillon, Director of Guidance. And Todd Sutton, Woodwork and Teacher at Freehold Tancher High School, who with the students made the beautiful plaques for tonight's presentation to each of the window artists. They are absolutely beautiful, and they have a chance, find one and have a look at it. They're really wonderful. We thank Mrs. Pat Federici for coming out tonight to represent her family. As you know, Federici's Family Restaurant donates all the pizza for the students and teachers to enjoy on window painting day every year. Thank you, Pat. And last, but by no means least, we thank Annette Piazza for another outstanding year of excellent coordination, window painting, and parade details. We really don't know what we would ever do without her. Thank you, Annette. Please come up, thank you. Thank you all. This has been a wonderful reception every year. We feel very happy and honored to be here. Thank you.
So, thank you once again to all the members of Spooktacular Committee. It's, the years fly by very quickly, because it's denying that I've been here for this. Mr. Federici, thank you so much, overly generous, and it's really appreciated, the time. And to the art teachers who helped guide all these creative projects, thank you for all your time and energy. I think the purpose in putting it in for the students, I think your talent is on display to a world to see, and so, we're incredibly proud and honored to have such amazing, well-rounded students who express their creativity in such profound ways in this district. So, thank you, and safe travels. So, board members, you can stay in the audience, because we're gonna have another presentation momentarily. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dillon, who is the Director of Guidance and Operations. And so, folks know, on a biannual basis, we present what used to be known as the Violence and Vandalism Report. And what we decided several years ago was rather than simply just report out on these statistics on a page, that we wanted to make sure that we brought this report to life with students from our district who are engaged in helping to mitigate some of the poor decision-making that, you know, teenagers make mistakes in life, and we're here to help them through that process and support them through that process. And we have a number of clubs, programs, activities, student groups, staff and faculty here to help those students through those difficult times. And we'd like to highlight some of those programs each and every year, and so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Dr. Sampson. This evening, before I present on the Student Safety Data Systems, I would like to call up Mrs. McGowan. Mrs. McGowan is the Student Assistance Coordinator here at Manalapan High School. Mrs. McGowan and a group of five student leaders will be presenting to you on some of the good work that they do here at Manalapan High School. This is just one group out of the six in all of our high schools who are working with our ninth graders on educating them on the dangers of vaping. So, without further ado, welcome, Mrs. McGowan and the five student leaders.
Just to share a little bit about this presentation today, the Student Assistance Coordinators across the district are working with student leaders to implement a vape education program. What you'll see today from a few of our Manalapan leaders is a pseudo-ignite condensed version of the presentation that will be given to freshmen. Our hope is to inform and help students in making good decisions. But without further ado, I invite our student leaders to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Donna Gog. I'm a co-founder and president of a club here called Raising Awareness. I helped run another club called Cancer Awareness. I'm in three honor societies, the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and the Social Studies Honor Society. I'm also the captain of Iron Mountain, New York. I hope to be attending Case Western Reserve University in the fall as a bio major.
Hi, I'm Sarah McGrady. I'm the Outreach Coordinator for the Social Studies Honor Society, the Treasurer for the Math Honor Society. I run varsity track and field. I'm a member of the NJSTN Class Council. I'm part of the Principal's Executive Cabinet. I'm a peer leader, and I hope to major in Communications at the University of Virginia.
Hi, my name is Luke Calphorn. I'm the Vice President of the Social Studies Honor Society. I'm a member of the Principal's Executive Cabinet. I'm an editor in the Euro Club, and I hope to attend UMass as well and major in Political Science.
Hi, I'm Nikki Glasso. I'm the President of the National Honor Society here at our school. I'm a varsity athlete on the field hockey and cross teams. I'm a member of the Math Honor Society and the Social Studies Honor Society. I participate in JSA. I'm a peer leader, and I hope to pursue a career in the science field at Northeastern University.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Vigante. I'm the founder and president of Students Helping Hounders. I'm the president of Mio Art for Theatre and Mathematics Club, and I'm also involved with JSA, Principal's Committee, and Row Club. The title of our presentation is Don't Get Vaped in. Today, we're here to answer two central questions. What is vaping, and why are we talking about this? Well, vaping is inhaling and exhaling of aerosol. Aerosol is commonly referred to as the vapors that come from e-cigarettes or other electronic delivery systems. Throughout the past few years, you guys have noticed a huge decline of tobacco products. This comes from a huge rise in e-cigarettes or other electronic delivery systems. Now, for this presentation today. The purpose of our presentation is to educate and spread awareness. We have to be realistic here in the sense that not all students will adhere to our message. However, if a few students can pick up our message, our presentation will have meaning, and we can change the world.
We're also here to tell you about some of the different chemicals found within e-cigarettes and vapes. Because the FDA does not require e-cigarette manufacturers to list all their ingredients, we're only aware of some chemicals found within them. The main ingredient is nicotine, the addictive chemical found in all tobacco products. Another is propylene glycol, which is a synthetic and organic compound meant to make things overdose. Diacetal is used in microwave popcorn factories and has detrimental health effects. These e-cigarettes also contain flavorings that when heated, release aerosol particles containing toxic chemical metals like nickel and lead, which aren't even used in pencils anymore because they're poisonous. The particles also contain cancer-causing formaldehyde, the same material used to preserve dead bodies. Cliserol, which is supposed to be used in food additives and as a sweetener, can also be found in these vapes and e-cigarettes.
As most of us know, I should come up for a second. Well, yeah, that's the Juul. We're all trying to think of the same question. Are Juuls safer than cigarettes? Well, let's look at the facts. Thanks to the Juul, more high school students are using e-cigarettes than ever before. In the last year alone, usage rates have risen by 78% for high school students and 50% for middle school students. Research shows us that someone who uses a Juul is four times as likely to start smoking traditional cigarettes. The majority of youth that use the Juul are between 15 and 24 years old, mostly in high school and college. Perhaps the most startling information is that a single Juul pod is roughly equal to a full pack of cigarettes. Clearly, based on this research, Juuls are not safe than cigarettes, and shouldn't be regarded as such.
There are risks in e-cigarette and vape usage even without the nicotine. The flavors added to e-liquid have only been tested and approved as in food meant to be eaten, not inhaled directly into the lungs. The health effects of inhaling these flavors is currently unknown. There are various side effects that e-cigarette and vape companies fail to mention in their advertising. Nicotine damages brain growth and hinders development. And diacetal, a chemical found in these vapes, causes popcorn lung, which is a curable lung damage. There are potential long-term effects as well. E-cigarette users may experience learning and attention difficulties, vulnerability to addiction, and a permanent decrease in impulse controllability. E-cigarettes and vapes have also been known to explode while in use, causing second and third degree burns, and in some cases, death. Currently, the FDA does not require e-cigarette manufacturers to include all of their ingredients and side effects. However, the FDA is starting to take notice and put these vape companies in check. Recently, there's been evidence to suggest that youth are experiencing seizures and convulsions due to e-cigarette usage. With new research in cases, the known side effects and evidence decline in the health of e-cigarette users continues to grow.
So, we know that 90% of adult smokers began smoking before age 18. However, we don't yet know the long-term effects vaping will have on the age of these. So, just how many teens are lighting up? According to the CDC, almost 21% of students are using e-cigarette devices, which is about 3.6 million teens, or one in five high school students. E-cigarette use grew by 900% between 2011 and 2015. Why do you think there's been such an increase? Which leads us to the why. Why do students vape? Many students choose to vape to relieve the unbearable amounts of stress and expectations placed on them from school and their home life.
Another reason why may be peer pressure. When students are around others that are juuling, for example, any social event or party, they may feel left out or distant from their friends, which leads new people to begin juuling.
Students who do not vape view other students who indulge in such activities as bad people. However, we're trying to provide them with the perspective that these are actually good people with a potential change of world. However, due to bad decisions, because of stress, peer pressure, bad situation, they indulge in such activities.
Many students are simply in denial. They deny the accuracy of the facts in studies, and are convinced that addiction and other side effects cannot happen to them. But in reality, it's a very serious possibility, one that can be easily avoided.
All of these reasons and many more are why getting this message out is so important. Our goal is to reach the freshmen and meet and help them understand the impact vaping has on their lives. So, where can you find help if you need it? You can go to any of the websites listed before to get help.
Okay, thank you, Manalapan High School student leaders, and thank you, Mrs. McGowan. So, just to give everybody a little bit of context here. Last spring, the state of New Jersey, and tobacco-free New Jersey came out with a grant to which they were willing to train all the Student Assistance Coordinators, and myself, along with many other high school educators across the state. We took advantage of that opportunity, all the SACS were trained. What we decided to implement this year was a vape education program with our ninth grade students. So, we really want to start with that base, get them educated, so that they are making good decisions. The way that the grant works is we have the choice whether we could just have educators go in and work with students, or have peers go in and work with students. And we really felt the effectiveness of having some peers go in with the Student Assistance Coordinator to help educate our students, and again, make them, you know, think about their decisions before they do something impulsive. So, a group just like this in each of our high schools is working with students just starting this November, all the way through December. So, they're pushing into classrooms, working with those students, and again, connecting with some older peers, again, hopefully, making an impact. I'm gonna move along to the Student Safety Data System presentation. So, before putting numbers up on the screen, which is what you're gonna see, I always like to put everything into context. So, remember, we are the Freehold Regional High School District. We have 10,600 students to which we serve on a regular basis. We're the largest regional district, or certainly the largest high school district within the state. So, when you're looking at these numbers, keep that in context. Oftentimes, most of these numbers, I'll say all of them, are under 2% of our student population, most of them under 1.5%. So, again, a small percentage of students. However, that doesn't mean that we don't continue to put in interventions. We continue to try different methods at work to help students make good decisions. Again, in terms of context, the data that you're going to see is representative of information from January 2019 all the way through June 2019. So, really, the last portion of last school year. So, just to kind of categorize, this kind of sums up the data into the big categories that were required to report to the State Department of Education. Violence incidents, so that could be like a fight or an assault. Vandalism, weapons, when you see seven there, again, to put it in context, there's no weapons use. This is a weapons possession. All of those were something like a knife, or a pocket knife, a fishing knife, something of that nature. Again, something that we don't permit here on school grounds. We take very seriously through both discipline and also education. Substance abuse is at 82. Again, all of those numbers are, and I'll show you in the further slides, they're all around marijuana vaping, okay? That's the biggest thing. It's obviously a nationwide epidemic. We're no different here. We have multiple measures in place to combat them. I'll go through that in a little bit. Hid, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The number 21 represents the number of investigations that we conducted, again, from January all the way through June. And I'll break that down into how many of those investigations resulted in a affirmative versus those that resulted in an alleged him or an unfounded incident. In terms of violence, so you can see the context broken down. Simple assault, sexual contact, threat, and fight. Again, all of these are taken seriously. And in most of these incidences, again, according to a state law, they are reported to the police. Any type of threat, obviously, in this day and age, we take extremely seriously. There's law enforcement involvement, consulting with psychiatrists, discipline expulsion hearings. All of those things are included, again, to make sure that we're providing the safest environment for all of our students and faculty. Here, you can see the different breakdown for vandalism. You can see damaged property trespassing. We had zero incidences. Deaths, we had three. Those are usually low level. However, every once in a while, you know, there's a phone that's stolen. Those are all reported, and we do our best to conduct an investigation, obviously notify law enforcement as well. You can see with weapons, as I explained before, those are all possessions. Those are typically a pocket knife, fishing knife, even left it in their bag. Again, not something that we just look and then move on from. There's obviously significant discipline and education, not only for the student, but for the parent as well. I do attribute a lot of this information to our communities, so our students are very vocal about speaking up. So, if there is some type of threat on social media, or they're concerned that a student may have something on them, they are very good about speaking up, letting us know. We have an anonymous reporting system within all of our schools, where if students don't feel comfortable, you know, giving out their name, they can report it anonymously. We can keep an eye and investigate accordingly. The final category, substance abuse. So, you can see under the influence, so this will be an instance where a student was believed to be under the under the influence of some type of illegal substance. Here in New Jersey, we're mandated reporters. Once a teacher or faculty member believes a student is under the influence, we automatically send them to the nurse. The nurse evaluates them. We send them for a chemical screen and also a physical exam as well, again, to make sure that their well-being is taken care of. After the fact, there's a lot of things that we do in the schools. There's really two parts. Obviously, there's traditional discipline, and then there's going to be some counseling and education. Back in August of 2018, we revised our substance abuse policy to include a little more flexibility and latitude in terms of dealing with the vape. So if an administrator is unsure what's in that device, they have the ability to send that student for a chemical screen so we can, again, make sure their safety and welfare is being taken care of. To the same effect, when our students have a substance abuse type of issue, when they come back to school, there's an entry meeting with the administrator. Our student assistance coordinator, just like Ms. McGowan, meets not only with the student, but also with the parent to educate them on the dangers of the substance and also refer them to some agencies outside, as well as some counseling that we've done in school. This chart here just gives you an idea of possible substances. You can see, really no surprise, it's the marijuana, THC oil, and vape is at fifty-eight, and the only other legal substance would be alcohol at two. I can tell you, you know, all of these issues pass through me. There's a handful that would be the traditional marijuana. I'm talking probably less than five. These are all the marijuana vape oil that has been plaguing this nation and you can see more and more the deadly health effects that these things are causing. Onto conferred harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. So these are incidents that when we investigated them, we found them to actually be an incident of harassment, intimidation, bullying according to the Anti-Bullying Act. So what that means is we found a distinguishing characteristic that a student, a group of students, was targeting, and it did impact that student's school day. In these cases, we remediate that, obviously, with discipline and also counseling, not only for the offenders, but for the victims as well. Alleged HIV incidents, so these are incidents that were brought to our attention. Because of the nature when we initially investigated, we did investigate it as a HIV, so there may have been a distinguishing characteristic, could have been someone's physical appearance, race, religion, color, that caused us to investigate it that way. After conducting the investigation, we found it not to be a HIV, according to the law. However, that doesn't mean it wasn't addressed either through the code of conduct or through some counseling and education. So any issue or incident that's brought to us, we always address it. Again, according to the ABR, the law, we address it, you know, through one path or the other, depending on the outcome. So here are just some of the partnerships, activities, clubs that we have. They're really encourage students to make good decisions. As Dr. Sampson said, we always want to get kids involved and get them connected. When kids are connected to a club, activity, sport in our high school, they're usually making better choices. One person who we've been working with in our schools is Timothy Shoemaker. He's kind of on the forefront, the cutting edge of the base. I do encourage everyone to come out. We actually have a parent presentation to which all Freehold Regional High School District parents and our Senate K-8 districts are invited to. It's gonna be February 5th over at Colts Neck High School at six thirty. So we're doing everything that we can here, again, to educate our students, our faculty, and also our parents to hopefully try to counteract this wave that's kind of sweeping across our nation. Again, you know, we're not stopping there. Since, obviously, this inception, three, four, or five years ago now, we now have vape detectors installed in all six of our high schools. Again, that's a piece of the puzzle, helps us to try to combat this and then hopefully have students not engaging in that type of activity. The education piece is really critical, again, for students, for parents, and just our revision of our policy, giving our administrators some latitude, again, to send students for that chemical screen and that physical to make sure their well-being is caught up and then on the backend, providing them with that counseling when they're back in school. So again, I encourage you to come out to that parent presentation. Mr. Shoemaker, along with many other presenters, work with our students in different assemblies, smaller groups, our faculty, at different faculty meetings after school. So again, we as a community are educated on this and we can, again, help our students to really stay away from this detrimental thing. That will conclude my report, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Sampson.
So thank you, Mr. Dillon. Before, we'll take just a quick recess to allow the board to come back up to the podium, but just with the vaping epidemic, you know, I do think that we may have seen a cresting of a number of students who are addicted, have had issues, young folks. I'm hoping that the news that's come out recently, over and over again, about, you know, not just harmful effects, but people dying, right, and what this looks like. This board and this administration has been hammering away at those harmful effects for a number of years. With six high schools, obviously, we saw that very quickly, the emergence of that. And for those of us who've been in administration for a while, been in schools for a while, we know that we had reached a point where tobacco products had really, really diminished in schools. And so we went from, you know, the late eighties into the nineties where smoking was a prevalent problem to well into the two thousands where you almost never saw it in schools. And this was a rebirth of an entire generation that is addicted to nicotine, but more importantly, inhaling the chemicals that are often in these vapes that are harmful. And then you have companies like Juul, when the CEO is a former marketer from Google and has bright-colored advertisements for kids, and they market it directly to kids. And, you know, whether they say that or not, I think it's irrefutable from anybody who's looking at it to say that they did not market children directly, teens in particular. And I'm hoping that with enough education, especially on the parent end, to understand what some of these things might look like, because you often can't notice them, and just staying as vigilant as possible and, you know, helping students through that process once they may have tried some of that stuff and made a poor decision. Sure, Mr. Dillon. I mean, I hope so, you know. I think that, you know, the news has done a pretty good job of just putting it front and center, you know, what's happening to people. If anybody saw, one of our graduates was on an NJ.com feature, a twenty-three, twenty-four-year-old Manalapan High School graduate talking about what happened to her experience with vaping and what that looked like. You know, I think if there's not tighter regulations, though, I really worry about what that looks like. I think that legislators need to step in, take some stronger action. I think from a community standpoint, often, you know, when you drive down Route Nine and every twenty feet, there's a vape shop, you know, that's a concern. You know, but I can only hope that the education and the awareness is out there to a point that folks are really taking notice now. You know, vaping started rather quietly because people didn't know it, didn't know what it looked like. It was odorless, it was contained in containers that often looked like other things, and so it went undetected, you know, for quite some time, I think, from folks not even knowing what to look for. And I think the education is starting to really, really get out there. So I'm hopeful, you know, I think it's a difficult position to have put a huge number of students in, though, and to reignite that whole new generation addicted to nicotine. So we'll just take a two-minute recess and allow the board to come back up to the table and continue from there.
Continue with a couple important elements of my report. So first and foremost, I know that community members are aware, over the past year or so, there's been quite a fear of synthetic floors that are in public schools and that were found to have traces of mercury. Oftentimes, what happened apparently, especially in the eighties and nineties, some of these builders who put these floors in, used mercury to bind it in some way, was not disclosed to schools. And so the state had put out some guidance saying if you'd installed any of these floors between the late sixties and late nineties, that there was probability that there might be mercury there. We don't have any of those floors that fit in that timeline. Our floor art, we have several synthetic floors across the district. They're all installed post-two thousand, so out of the timeframe of what the state recommended. But to err on the side of caution, we had those floors tested regardless over the past couple of weeks. And they've all come back under, you know, the acceptable thresholds and are found to be safe from the environmental firm that we hired. And we'll continue to look at the lifespan of those floors to begin with. They're all twenty-plus years old at this point in time, it's part of our regular maintenance plan, and we'll move from there. But I want to dispel any this, that there was anything unsafe on any of our floors, because it's not the case. Want to just wrap up a little bit about what's happened with the referendum that went on Election Day. Obviously, ensuring excellence was put before the voters. It went down very narrowly, question one, fifty-one to forty-nine percent. Passed in four communities, went down in four communities. Puts us in a very difficult position as the Senate Bill Two progresses through. For folks who don't know what that is, what Senate Bill Two was, was passed by the legislature last year. Changes the way that schools are funded in the state of New Jersey. What's that's resulted in for the Freehold Regional High School District is an overall reduction of approximately thirty million dollars in state aid over a multi-year period, resulting in a four-million-dollar cut this year and somewhere between six and eight million dollars in the subsequent year, and then six to seven million a year, per year for the next five years. So puts us in an incredibly difficult position. With the referendum not passing, there was a number of capital projects and security improvements and things of that nature that were included in that proposal. Obviously, significant portions of that work need to still be done, and that will come unfortunately at a cost to what we need to reduce across programs and things of that natures for our students. We're gonna continue to work with our elected officials to change some of the legislation, particularly some of the more onerous and what I would deem as irrational components of S Two. I'm not sure that folks understand the full impact of what a thirty-million-dollar reduction looks like in a school district that is educating students for fifteen thousand dollars ahead when the average in the state is closer to eighteen thousand. Puts us in an incredibly difficult position in the coming years. I do want to, once again, implore my community to explore and understand the components of S Two and what your elected officials are supporting, if they are supporting S Two, and what that looks like for our communities. We've called down the Department of Ed and the Governor's Office to reexamine the funding formula to begin with. We think it is deeply flawed. We think there are a number of problems with that. And most notably, that it arbitrarily has increased our ability to pay, which has jacked up our contributions, you know, for what we're expected to pay. We cannot, with a two percent cap on the tax levy, we cannot even go out to our voters and make up the scope of that funding. It's not even close. But more importantly, the oversimplified argument that we have a declining student population and that's why we're receiving the funding we are is an artificial argument. Because if every single student that we've lost over the past decade suddenly walked through our doors tomorrow, we would still be shorted millions upon millions of dollars. So it's a false argument, and it's one that has been overly simplified, grabbed with full gusto by elected officials. And the support of S Two is the support of long-term destruction of this school district, period. It's thirty million dollars. Thirty million dollars on a two-hundred-million-dollar budget. For perspective, we've received at least fifty to fifty-one million dollars in state aid for the past decade. By the end of this, we'll receive eighteen million. That's the difference of what will be reduced from this district. Students in the audience, the parents in our communities, will begin immediately, will feel this beginning in September and feel it drastically. There will be some drastic changes over the course of the next year or so. We're gonna continue to take a look at how we might be able to accomplish some of these projects that were included in the referendum. We're gonna continue to educate our public. I'm gonna continue to send things home to my school community that outline what S Two is, what is contained in S Two and contact information for folks who support S Two. And we're gonna continue to knock on our legislator's door to hope that there is some relief from S Two in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Normally, we have board reports now, which include curriculum, instruction, finance, and policy. However, we had no committee of meetings the past run. I saw there was nobody signed up for public participation. So, Mr. Boyes, are there any changes to the agenda you wish to note?
I have, I have two. In G Three, the approval of appointments, the start date for James Geis should be changed to December 2nd. So that's an amendment. And also on J Sixteen, which is the submission for the federal ESEA grant application amendment, just rolling carryover funds in from one year to the next. The number that's in the agenda, forty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars, should read seventy-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. So with those two corrections.
Thank you, Mr. Boyes. May I have a motion to approve G One through K Two?
Motion.
Second?
Motion.
Discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
I have, I just wanted to make a comment on the school calendar. And I know that last year I had asked a question, asked a question about why we can't get Veterans Day off. And it was explained to me that, and I'm assured that this happens, that there are activities that go on in each school in honor of Veterans Day. But as I look at the calendar and I think about what Veterans Day really, the meaning of Veterans Day, I would like to have people just consider Veterans Day off as opposed to Columbus Day. Veterans Day is to honor veterans actively serving, our veterans of previous wars, most of who are older population, our students, our goals, or grandparents. And I would see it more fit that they would be able to spend the day with the veteran and their family, meeting with them, talking with them, having lunch with them, interacting with them. And I think that there'd be more benefit to that as opposed to having Columbus Day off, because we certainly can't interact with Columbus. So just for consideration, Veterans Day always falls on the eleventh of November, unless it is on a weekend. But, you know, there's significance to November eleventh at eleven AM. So this next year, it would fall on a Wednesday, and I would just like to see if there's any other opinions. Anybody else have any suggestions or thoughts on making that change? And I know that we try very hard to coordinate with our sending districts, the elementary districts, but in this case, I just think that maybe an exception should be made and some consideration be made.
If I could, Diane, to respond to you on that, I think that the board will bring that up, or I suggest we bring it up at the next executive session and have a detailed discussion on the pluses and minuses of it. But certainly, I share your sentiments regarding the value of our veterans. And let's discuss fully in the executive session next time.
Since I'm with the story here.
Yes.
I know in the seventies that we had Veterans Day off. And we did have Columbus Day off. So I don't know when, I don't remember when it changed, but there is a precedent for us having Veterans Day off.
Okay.
Yeah, so just some background so everybody knows, you know, where we are. So this is the first week.
So this is the first read of the calendar. There's two reads, and the reason that there are two reads in the calendar is to elicit any feedback. You know, Veterans' Day has been something that we've gone back and forth with over the past couple of years. We have, we have come to, we arrived on the shores that we felt that it was very valuable in school, that there were a number of students that wouldn't be exposed to Veterans' Day at all if not for something that was afforded in their school, especially if they didn't have a veteran in their immediate family, and that we felt that it was a valuable educational experience to have them, to have them in school. The Columbus Day is more been, the district's been closed on Columbus Day, that tends to be a professional development day, so the staff are here, but the students aren't. And so that's historically been a professional development day in the district. You're not going to get any arguments out of me about the merits of Veterans' Day. That's, you know, I think it's a somber day, it's an important day, no matter what we decide. I certainly respect the board members' opinions, and Ms. Capiello, I respect your opinion on that deeply, and we can certainly discuss that, that's why there are two reads. We do work in conjunction with our K eight partners as well, and they are all open as well on that day, and that's something that we sit down and try to keep the calendars aligned as possible. It's certainly not a reason not to have anything on the calendar. Our K eight partners all also think they're all important decisions as well. But I do think for the typical student who may not have any veterans in their family, that the day is much more meaningful in school, learning about the origins of Veterans' Day, having guest speakers, having veterans come to the school and share their experiences, than it would be for a student without veterans in their family, sitting at home with a day off with no attachment to the day whatsoever. It's just, it's a perspective. I'm certainly open to anything, but the rationale from the school district's end has always been that we, you know, we're responsible for making sure the significance of that day is understood by all eleven thousand students, not just those who have veterans in their family, and you think that that was the best way to do it. But we have another read, so we can continue to discuss.
Yes, we'll continue to discuss, and getting back to the motion to approve items G one through K two. If you're going to abstain, do it when you're voting for it, please, and let's take a roll.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. I have to abstain from H K one, Dr. Hazel and Dr. Sampson, and H one, Dr. Hazel and Dr. Sampson.
Ms. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except I abstain on K one for Dr. Hazel and Dr. Sampson.
Ms. Van Kelder?
Yes.
Ms. Lavin?
Yes, and I'm staying on H four.
As to you.
As to you.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes, to all, abstain on H four as it pertains to me.
Mr. Moses?
Yes, on all, except for H four as it pertains to me.
Ms. Sutera?
Yes, for all, except I abstain on H four.
As to you, correct.
Ms. Sutera? As it pertains to you, Ms. Sutera.
As it pertains to you?
Yes.
Mr. Astoloff?
Yes, on all, except I abstain on H four as it pertains to me.
And, Mr. Boyes, just note that Mr. Bruno's can vote on H four as was as to him. And just, just so everyone's clear, H four was billless, there was reimbursement paid to board members, although we have it in our resolutions that yes vote towards medicating yourself is deemed an extension. Just to be upfront and clear, we always recommend that members abstain, ready vote affecting themselves. So that's all that it was. Was there anything I told you?
Thank you for your candidness, Mr. Scott. Any old business?
Oh, can I, on the new business, can I just?
Well, let me get to new business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't hear you now.
Okay. So you know there's no old business, let's get to new business.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I just wanted to give some kudos to Dave Rodden over at Marlboro High School because before the homecoming game this year, he organized a homecoming festival, and based upon the way it was set up, the student organizations involved, the fire and first date squads from Marlboro that were there, you can tell he put a lot of work into it. And I just feel he should be recognized for this effort, because I was very impressed with all the work he did and the way it came out. So kudos to Dave Rodden.
I just want to say hat off to Doreen Shapiro and the Manalpin community for running the state sectional gymnastics meet, great meet. Doreen also runs the shore conference championship, which Freehold Taffy Girls won this year, and the state sectional. And then on a personal note, my friend here, Amy, I will not be in for the summer meeting because I'll be away in Connecticut, and I just want to thank her. She's been a mentor and a friend. I enjoyed my forty years on the board with you, and she's no longer going to be with us come January, in our, January, we start our new year, and we'll stay friends, but learned a lot from you, and she did keep us on our toes, and, you know, three help people, plus telling them we're close, so we'll miss you.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.